Okay, the regular meeting of the Pansyl City Board of Education for April 9th is now called to order. Mrs. Seaman, would you call the room please?
Sure. Mr. Costello?
Here.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Yeah, here.
Ms. Remington?
Present.
Mr. Tackett?
Almost here.
Mr. Webster?
Here.
If we will stand for pledge waving? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item number 1.3 is a motion to adopt the agenda, tonight's agenda. Is that moved?
Second.
For discussion, I would like to make an amendment to the agenda. We have an executive session at the end, and I would like to add a second executive session for the purpose of employment, and Mr. Costello will read both of those statements at the end separately. Is there any other discussion?
Do I have to make a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes.
I will make a motion to amend the agenda to include a second executive session for employment reasons.
Second.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Seaman, could you call them please?
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Webster?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Yes.
Item 3.1, sorry, 2.1 is guidelines for public participation. Do we have anyone that has signed in to speak this evening?
I think we have.
Okay. Okay, Board of Education recognizes the-
No, one second. There's no other-
For agenda items in the place.
Oh, this is the public room.
Pansyl City, Pansyl's calling. It's alert now.
Okay, so for hearing of the public on agenda items, we do not have any signatures for this evening. So, we will go on to item 3.1, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting for March 12th, 2018. We need a motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Seaman?
Okay, Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Webster?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Yes.
Item 3.2 is the approval of the minutes of a special meeting, a special meeting of March 27th, 2018. We need a motion.
Still moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Webster?
Yes.
Mr. Costello?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
I'm standing.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Yes.
And Dr. Englehardt will now do some presentations.
Okay, so we have three presentations on the agenda tonight, first being our Writer of the Week award winners, who looks like we have some students here to present to us.
We do.
And I'll ask Ms. Camper to bring them up.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to take this opportunity, since we have so many guests tonight, to talk about what the Writer of the Week is. Writer of the Week started about three years ago through our curriculum department. We really believe in the importance of continuing to focus on writing as we celebrate our progress and growth and learning, and it's amazing. So Nicole Byers from our curriculum department had this idea where we would have teachers of all grade levels submit just outstanding writing samples from students. And she does a great job of trying to motivate our teachers to take the extra step to submit the things to her. And then we, through the board office, we read the submissions, and it's truly amazing the work that we see our students doing. So today, we have four members of Kristin Habisco's second grade classroom from Elm who are all going to read portions of their report. So if I could have all four of you come down. So we have Jasmine, we have Joshua, we have Kayla, and we have Kimberly. So come on down. Now, I have to say, I was able to go visit this classroom when these awards were given to Ms. Habisco's class, and they were so excited to share everything. And if you haven't seen their reports, you really do need to look on the website. So what Ms. Habisco said about all of the students who are with us tonight is that she submitted their informative writing because they all did a wonderful job making sure to teach their information. They wrote neatly, they had correct sentence structure, grammar, they taught the reader information about the topic, and they worked very hard. They used resources around the room to find information, and all in all, they were great writers throughout this project. So each one of them is going to read a little portion, and we're going to have Jasmine go first. Ready? Come on up.
Animals can be classified into six different groups. Mammals have flying wings, mammals have four legs, mammals are blood-blooded. Mammals have lungs to breathe air. Mammals have hair of dogs, cats, lions, or mammoths. Reptiles are another group. Reptiles can lay eggs. Reptiles are cold-blooded. And mammals, reptiles can- reptiles have dry skin. Reptiles usually have four legs, turtles, legs, and limbs are all the kinds.
Thank you, Jasmine. Our next reader will be Joshua.
You can classify animals into six different groups. Mammals are free. Insects are the third group we can use to classify. Insects have an exoskeleton, which means that they do not have blind. Insects go through what is called metamorphosis, which means that their bodies have changes. Dragonfly and ladybugs are examples of insects.
Our next reader will be Kayla.
The next group we can classify animals into is fish. Fish have scales and fins. They have gills to breathe underwater. Most fish lay eggs. They are cold-blooded. Sharks, porpoise, and cod are examples of fish.
Excellent, thank you. And our last reader is Kimberly.
Our fifth group for animals classification is amphibians. Amphibians go through metamorphosis. Amphibians usually have webbed feet. Amphibians breathe with lungs and limbs. Frogs, toads, and leopards are examples of amphibians. Birds have beaks to eat, because if they did not have a beak, they would not be able to eat.
Thank you, can we all clap? We need pictures. Oh, sure. Without the computer in the way. You don't, do you want, should I stay?
Or should we bring them up front?
Yeah. Right up front, right on the board, that would be really good.
Well, we don't have a packed house. It's amazing. We have adults that have a hard time with some of this small crowd, and we get second graders up here, it's just-
Yeah. Can't let off.
Yeah.
Great work, students, and keep up the great work.
And nice time.
Yeah, nice.
Okay, our next presentation is Service Learning Projects, and Ms. Rappport is going to present.
Okay, there we go. Well, I'm here today to talk about projects our students embarked on this year. They signed up for one project, we got two for the price of one, I'll talk about that a little bit. The first was Appalachian Service Project, and the other one, Service and Leadership Experience for Students. Harvey High School had seven participants, and I'm going to talk about them in depth later. So I'll talk about the programs, we'll hear a little bit from the students, and then we're going to pay tribute to the students who participated. A little bit about ASP, Appalachian Service Project. It was a joint venture between the Lake and Geoffrey County Educational Service Centers. Thirty-two students from 12 to 14 high schools in those two counties participated. Seven from Harvey High School, we had the largest contingent of any school. The project, we met once a month with the other students from the other schools, starting in September. And on a very cold and snowy, this was January 1st at 7:00 a.m. Students departed for a seven-hour trip to Jonesville, Virginia, which is a very poor community in rural Appalachia. They spent, these students spent five days during their winter break performing hands-on service projects in rural Appalachia. Here's a few pictures. They'll talk a little bit about their project in a few minutes. I'd like to thank the Lubrizol Corporation for generously paying the program fee for all seven of our students. So the kids signed up for the ASP, they knew they'd be making that trip. What we didn't know when we started going to those meetings in September was that we were also supposed to do a local project in a small group. And the kids embraced that, they identified a need in our community, addiction awareness. And they had two goals, to raise awareness and to raise funds. For the awareness part, most of us have seen or have a number of these Rubber Cough bracelets. Well, our students created their own. They made hundreds of these, beaded purple, it's kind of the cause color for addiction. They made hundreds of these, that they distributed throughout their project. Probably not supposed to solicit, but this was from, we asked people if they would donate at least a dollar. We gave them a Purple Cough bracelet to, again, generate awareness. We met with a number of people from nonprofit organizations in Lake County. And what we found was the Compass Line, and I have two students here, they'll be passing out these cards. The Compass Line is sort of a clearinghouse, whether you have an addiction, whether you have a family member, neighbor, work with anyone that needs resources, the Compass Line is sort of the one, the first place you want to call to find out information about addiction to get yourself or your loved one to the right resources. So if you know someone is struggling before you leave, we're going to give everybody at least one of those Compass Line cards. Okay, so that's a copy, that's the Compass Line, you call them, they'll point you or anyone you know in the right direction as far as getting information about addiction. Fundraising, we plan to raise a thousand dollars. The Lake County Adams Board has told us if we can raise 500, they would match that 500. The students, again, we met with a number of resources, and the students picked a source that they felt they wanted to donate the funds to. The entire thousand dollars will be donated to a place called Naveo Ridge. It's a supportive housing facility for pregnant women and women with young children who are battling addiction. And this really touched the hearts of our students, and they indicated they would like all of the money we raised to go to that cause. We're going to hear some student testimonials. I have two of the seven kids here, so Zach, Zach Wilson, would you like to share with us a little bit about your experience?
Upon taking this trip during my terrible winter break of just bad weather, I really didn't know what to expect. I was expecting to go and do like little work, like maybe clean the yard, pick up trash here and there. But upon reaching our destination and leaving out the next day to go to these homes, we realized that these homes were homes of people that were really poverty-stricken. And upon, and being in those houses, helping, like just seeing it, it was just an environment I was not used to myself. And just being in that environment and seeing how people live in different areas, and it really made me appreciate the life I have here and what I do have, and appreciate those things that I do have and that I take for granted day by day. So it was definitely an experience that I felt was a great character-building experience for me, myself, and for my peers. I wish a lot more of my peers would have chosen to do what I did over that five days, because it made me have a different outlook on life and really appreciate everything that I've come into contact with. And it helped me change my future plans and what I plan to do coming upon college next year. And I really want to help people, and yeah, it kind of opened my eyes a lot, so it was a great experience.
We have Zach Burmell in as well.
Like Zach said, the place we went to was very impoverished. All of us were split up into different groups. Some people went to houses that didn't even have a wall installed. The place that I went to was a man named Philip, he was very generous to share what happened to him. And very, he liked everything we're doing, he always wanted to help us, even though we didn't really have a job for him. So every day we went out there, he'd come out every two hours to ask if he wanted to help us at all. We ended up putting siding on his entire, his place. He had to get rid of all of it, all the insulation was ruined, we had to put new insulation in. And I came home with new experience, how to put siding on a house, and how generous some people can be despite their things they've gone through.
We're going to pay tribute to these students, I'd like to talk a little bit about them. We started this really at the beginning of the school year, and I'm always tapping kids on the shoulder and saying, "Have I got a great opportunity for you?" And these seven kids took me up on that, and we started going to the meetings. And things that really impressed me about them was they all had a very strong desire to help others. They all saw this as an opportunity to help others. The next thing that really impressed me, they all had the, they saw it as an opportunity to expand their horizons and experience living in a poor rural community, learn something new. So I, these kids, they've got such big hearts. We didn't know a lot about this project when we started. It became late December, just a couple weeks before the trip, and we found out what was really involved. It was going to be more hammers and tools and not so much picking up, it was going to be serious work, it was going to be cold. The accommodations were adequate, but not much more, is that fair to say? Little to no Wi-Fi, five days during your break. Much peanut butter and jelly was eaten. So I said to them, once we found all these things out, I said, "You know, if you want to opt out, we still love you, and nobody, no harm, no foul." Please, you know, I gave them a chance to walk away, no one hesitated. They were all in, they were totally committed. So they have big hearts, they have open minds, and I'm just so proud of all seven of them. So our school board is going to recognize you at this time. So here we go. You're our hero, so Dr. Englehardt's going to recognize you.
So we have, we have some certificates of appreciation to issue all the students who participated, and I'll just read it very quickly. These certificates read, "In recognition of outstanding effort and excellence in performance in the Appalachian Service Project and the Service and Leadership Experience for Students. You have brought pride to your school and family as a model of leadership and academic excellence." So our two students who were able to be here tonight, we want to present these directly, so Zach Wilson?
Thank you.
Thank you. And Zach Lee Burmell. Okay, great job, you guys, thank you.
So, okay, probably not supposed to solicit, but about that fundraising, a couple of our events were canceled. And so if anybody would like, we were just a hundred dollars and some change short of that $500 goal. So during the break, if anybody would like Compass Cards, or we'd love to give you some of our bracelets, if you can give us a couple bucks toward our goal, so the students can give that thousand dollars to their cause, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rappport, and students, and are you going to take a few pictures out in the hall?
Yes. Yeah, and I'll just close that segment by saying that, you know, encouraging service among everybody, particularly our young men and women, is so critically important. It took a lot of work and a lot of partnerships to make an experience this big happen. So we're very appreciative to everyone who was involved. And just to put a finer point on it, these students gave up five days of their winter vacation, which is a very, very valuable time. And so we're just so appreciative that they took the advantage of that opportunity, so thank you once again. And that moves us to our third presentation this evening, which will be, Mrs. Chris Young, our Director of Student Services. She's going to give us a report on allocation of funds for federal programs.
There's usually like a little break or-
So- So while Mrs. Young's presentation is going to be a great one, it is, it's not, it's not quite as feel-good and entertaining as recognizing our students. So while everyone is more than welcome to stay for the duration of the meeting, if you would be interested in exiting at this time, that is perfectly okay, and you're free to do so. And thank you all for coming. Appreciate it very much.
Good job, buddy.
Ms. Rappel, do you have more of those bracelets?
We do.
Oh, you get to pick any one?
Yeah.
What's the most important one?
Which one, did you have that one?
Lake Erie is having a big, what, open program?
Good, man. I think he wants a bracelet, Zach. Go let him pick out a bracelet. Thanks, buddy.
This is kind of the little presentation I do every year. We get federal funds for special education, Title 6B, and all of our federal programs have to have public participation. Title 1 usually does it at parent conferences, Title 3, youth program, usually does that at parent family nights. I initially had started the first few years kind of holding a public meeting, but it was just me. And so we do it as part of the Board Agenda every year. And it's really just to present how we utilize our federal funds, which are really a portion of what we spend to serve students with disabilities. So about 17% of the students we have enrolled in Pansyl City have IEPs or have disabilities. We get some federal funding to help with those costs, it's really only a portion of that. We use about 80% of our federal dollars towards staffing. Really, that's teachers. We have, we have about 55 staff that are just dedicated to working with students with disabilities. We use specialized funding, the federal funds, to cover about six of those staff. So it's really not a large portion, but it does, it does cover six staff. So that's about 80% of what we use our federal funds for. The rest, we use about 5 to 10% on curriculum and instructional supplies to supplement other things from our curriculum department. This year, actually, we spent quite a bit on some curriculum and some mental supports for the high school. We use about 5 to 10% of our funding for mental health services. And then we use about 10 to 15% for special education transportation, which can be costly for some of our students who are, who need private transportation for. Everything else, kind of tuition to separate facilities, staffing costs, are really all out of general fund, so. And then we do, we have a portion that we have to set aside for our non-public, which is our shepherd, it's a small program. So that's really my kind of presentation of how we use our federal funds. I don't know if you have any questions about that, and you'll see me next year after some wonderful student presentation. I'll get to come up again, last year I think it was a wrestling team.
Has there been any word from the Federal Department of Ed about- about any potential changes in this funding? Are you aware of it?
As far as increases, no. I haven't heard of any changes in funding.
I was worried more about decreases, but...
There's always kind of talk about decreases. I haven't heard of anything that we're expecting this year. We also, even though we wouldn't run our own kind of personal finances, this is the way, you can't really roll money over. It's really kind of use it or lose it. You can roll a little bit over if you don't use it that year. Less than 10%. But, and this year, we did roll a little bit over from last year, but I haven't heard of any changes on the funding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Do I get a certificate?
Did you want your picture?
I was just thinking. I'm good. Okay, item 5.1 is the next regular meeting on May 14, 2018. And Ms. Remington, you have a legislative report?
I certainly do.
And she's already warned us, it's very likely.
I'm going to go quickly, though. I'm going to say the things that pretty much deal with the board. But I did want to say that the House Committee passed House Bill 360, which deals with suspensions and expulsion policies for incidents of harassment, intimidation, or bullying. Prior to the passage, the committee adopted an amendment that would permit a district to impose measures it deems appropriate during a student's suspension or expulsion. And this would exempt private schools from the bill's provision. So, you know, that has already gone through the House and passed. The committee continued to hear testimony on House Bill 491. And this is the bill that would require the State Board of Education to issue substitute licenses to qualified speech, language, pathologists, audiologists, registered nurses, physical therapists, occupational therapists, and social workers. There's no cost to the district on this. But the license may be issued upon the request of the superintendent of the district or of an educational service center. And the person applying must have been a valid license as well as a complete criminal background check. And the person that is employed to work in a substitute capacity by the school district shall not be employed by a district or school in a non-substitute capacity without satisfying any licensed sitter or permit requirements established in rules adopted by the state board that are applicable to the person's prospective position of employment. So... Yeah, it is easy for me to say. Right. It also heard, the House Committee also heard testimony only on House Bill 442, which is about permitting international students with an F-1 visa to participate in interscholastic athletics. House Bill 477 was on its third hearing, and that was to eliminate non-operational and outdated provisions that relate to the Ohio Department of Education and the operation of primary and secondary schools. 14 provisions were repealed. Amended provisions include that the Department of Education is required to create a performance management section on its public website to provide information on performance metrics for each school district. And the amendment requires the department to place this section in a prominent location on the website. It also removes pocket pagers from provisions regarding electric devices that school districts may prohibit students from carrying at school. House Bill 512. We had discussed this before. And there's a huge push by the Ohio School Board Association to get, what do I put? Resolutions passed by their district to oppose this House bill. This is the one where they are trying to eliminate the state school board and instead put a new agency in charge, which is the Governor's Office of Workforce Transformation. Will create a new agency called the Department of Learning and Achievement. And it pretty much strips every duty that the Ohio School Board has. And it's pretty frightening to those of us who support an Ohio School Board superintendent and the way that works.
And also piles in the...
No, that's quite all right. No, go ahead.
Well, it also piles in the region. It gets rid of the region of upper, higher level ed and brings them all into this agency. And then workforce development is also piled in there. I mean, it's just, it's a conglomeration of a large number of entities that...
They are issued appointments by the governor.
Well, the governor appoints the superintendent in charge of this new agency. Now, I would hate to say that it would be a political appointment and that the person might not have a whole lot of experience in any of these areas. But, you know, I think it bears looking at as far as perhaps considering a resolution to send to our representative to, you know, say this is something that we're very concerned about. We can discuss that later. The House concurred with the Senate amendments to House Bill 98, which now goes to the governor for his signature. This bill deals with the presentation of career information to students. And it provides state funding to certain school district with nuclear power plants in their territories. It reverses career technical education teacher licenses and provides for payments to, it revises, I said, payments to licensed career technical education teachers who do not have bachelor degrees. And House Bill 343 was passed by a vote of 59 to 38. And this requires a school board, in addition to other local taxing entities, to provide written notification to a property owner at least seven business days prior to initiating a claim on property valuation. The bill also requires the board to pass a resolution approving the tax claim or counterclaim in a public meeting prior to moving forward with the county board's revision process. So that affects us. And then there is House Bill 502 and 503, which requires specified employees of public schools to undergo annual youth suicide awareness and prevention training. Each board must require youth suicide awareness and prevention in-service training to all nurses, teachers, counselors, school psychologists, or administrators, or anyone else the board deems appropriate. The board must adopt curriculum in consultation with public or private agencies. And each board shall incorporate training in school safety and violence prevention, including human trafficking. And they shall adopt the curriculum. Okay. What was the Senate up to? Well, Senate Bill 226 would provide a permanent sales tax holiday each August and would allow educational service centers through a county school financing district to levy a property tax specified to fund school safety, security, and mental health services. Senate Bill 22 expands Ohio's 529 education savings plans to make earnings used for K-12 education expenses tax exempt. And to make contributed amounts eligible for a state tax deduction if used to pay K-12 education expenses. The Senate also amended and passed Senate Bill 216 by a vote of 33 to nothing. The amendment removes the bill's provision regarding educational aid permits and educational paraprofessional licenses. And the Senate passed House Bill 529, which makes capital appropriations and reappropriations for the biennium ending June 30, 2020. And the bill now goes to the House for a concurrence vote. We're almost through here. This, the House Finance Committee passed House Bill 378, which would create the Ohio Broadband Development Grant Program and allow school districts to apply for grants under the program. And this one is, I think, fairly timely. The committee heard sponsored testimony on HB 318. And this is, the legislation prescribes qualifications and training requirements for school resource officers. And boy, do they have a listing of things. They have to complete basic training program approved by the Ohio Police Officer Training Commission, complete at least 40 hours of school resource officer training within one year after appointment. If a school resource officer has been in the district, they can be exempt from compliance with the training requirements. The training shall include mechanics of being positive role model, appropriate role, understanding the use of developmentally appropriate interview, interrogation, de-escalation, and behavior management strategies. They have to be aware of the laws regarding compulsory attendance. They need to know how to manage students with special needs. They have to understand the trends and drug use. If the school district decides to utilize the school resource officer services, they have, the school district and the appropriate law enforcement agency has to first enter into a memorandum of understanding that clarifies the use of the school resource officer program and roles and expectations. And each memorandum of understanding shall address clearly defined set of goals, background requirements, or suggested expertise, including the understanding in child and adolescent development, clearly defined roles, responsibilities, and expectations, protocol on how suspected criminal activity versus school discipline is to be handled, the requirement for coordinated crisis planning and updating of school crisis plans. Students will have the opportunity to give input during the drafting of any memorandum. The school district shall post in a conspicuous place on the district's website or other location the documents to be made available to the public. They will provide a safe and learning environment, provide available resources to school staff, fostering positive relationships with students and staff, develop strategies to resolve problems affecting youth and protecting all students. And the school district or school administrator shall have the final decision-making authority regarding all matters of discipline. So that's just a little bit more than going to your police department and asking for a resource officer who likes children of that age. So, you know, that's something, as being fortunate to have two resource officers, we're going to have to definitely keep abreast of. And that's the end of my report. Any questions? Good. Did I be real long?
Okay. Item 7.1, we need a motion to accept donations. Do we have any discussion that we need to give donations?
I think it's wonderful how the community steps up to support our students. This was, I would believe, for the most of it, for the play.
Actually, a lot of it, I think, was for fan boosters.
Or was it, was it getting you too? I see a lot, oh, Harvey Music. Okay, I was just...
But there was a lot of donations for musical, too.
Any other comments? Mrs. Hema?
Mr. Webster?
Yes.
Ms. Christelle?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Tackin?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hema?
Sure.
Section 8, 8.1 through 8.5. They're the reports for the month, for March. The balance month, we're looking good. We're pretty much on track for our budget. So things are going pretty close to the end. Even though it doesn't seem like it weather-wise, but we're working down here.
Have you noticed any trends in, you know, the investment report? I didn't bother to ask you ahead of time, but have you noticed any trends over the last couple of months as the markets have gotten much more volatile again?
So we, well, overall this year, we're doing very well. Last year, we were well, but like last year, everybody made money. I mean, everybody made money. So this month, I mean, we had definitely better months earlier this school year. But, I mean, we're still making money. But yeah, it does kind of go with the market. I mean, so when markets up, there's more interest.
Most of our stuff are bond, right? I mean, it's pretty safe stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. But, I mean, we make more when things are doing well.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, for the superintendent's consent agenda.
Item 9.1, I have disposals. Item 9.2, I have a contract through the Ray County Education Service Center for Naviance TV. Item 9.3, I have sponsorship proposals for Lake Health.
We need a motion to, are there, we need a motion?
Some. Second.
Okay, on the Lake Health sponsorship proposal, I have one question. Are, so are we able to keep our same athletic trainer?
Yes. She's for Lake Health in this. Okay. That's last week. Yep.
Any other questions or comments on this?
Is this for 10 years?
Yes.
10 years?
10 years.
10 years.
Is that difficult? And it tells what they won't cover in terms of signage and what we cover in terms of signage.
That's awesome, though. It's very common of what a lot of area schools are doing.
And we did run this by legal?
Yes. My kin and my team reviewed it. They made some suggestions. We took it back to Lake Health. They accepted those changes. And all the changes are reflected in that document.
That's right.
For those here, this isn't the first time we've talked about this. We need that in the conversation.
Any further comments or questions? Is this under?
Sure. Ms. Christelle?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Now, can I vote yes on this?
Yes.
Okay. Well, because there was some question about the shared...
Yeah, that was the longest one.
That was the thing. Okay, all right. Okay, yes. Sorry. I was going to step out of, you know...
And Mr. Tackin?
Yes.
Mr. Webster?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Yes.
Yeah, they're not actual items. We have several policy updates. And these are on for first reading.
And the policy committee, Matt, we reviewed these. Went through them one by one, had some discussion. I think we actually made a couple of select changes.
There are some changes in that.
Most of the changes across these policies are... Um, most of the changes across these policies are just updates due to changes in revised code.
Some are modernization of terminology. That's right. Things I can't even learn.
Thinking out of BlackBerry.
Yeah, there's, there are several technology-related policies that were.
There's still BlackBerries around.
Yes, there are.
You deleted it.
Okay, I'm not getting back too much.
Okay, so on to personnel. So under personnel tonight, 11.1, we have retirement, 11.2, uh, reduction in force, 11.3, employment, 11.4, employment for summer school, 11.5, leaves, 11.6, classified substitutes, 11.7, certified substitutes, 11.8, supplemental pupil activity, uh, employment, and that's, that's it under personnel.
Second.
Second.
I have a second.
Mr. Webster?
Any discussion here? I wonder if Matt could tell us a little bit about himself since he's here.
Sure.
Do you want me to come up? I can't, I'll come up, so people don't worry in their heads. While I'm walking, first of all, I wanted to say how impressed I was that you recognized students and that there were so many students here tonight. My mother is an educator in Geneva schools, so I've been to many board meetings, Geneva, Asheville, Madison, all over the place, and I have never once been to a board meeting where students were recognized. So I think that that's fantastic, and it really speaks highly to, uh, the student centrism of this district. I am Matt Fouts, and, um, prior to this, I was a regional sales director for Compass Group North America, decided to leave that job because I wanted to pursue an opportunity with purpose, and now I am here today, um, working for the district. Today was my first day, got to do a lot of exciting work on the website, put together a few press releases, got to talk to Kim Pildak, who is phenomenal. Um, I was happy that she, she actually came looking for you. Um, and, um, got to talk to her for about an hour and a half.
Short conversation.
And, um, I'm really excited to be coming to the district. As far as, um, what I think I'll really add to the district, um, other than just communication strategy and marketing, um, I have a strong background in development and fundraising, and so I really want to, um, help provide opportunities to the students here. And, um, as a Northeast Ohio native, I'm, I'm truly thankful to be able to be here. Um, I was actually about two weeks prior to getting an email, um, that I was being considered for the role, I was about to accept an offer, um, down south, and I was going to be going to Houston, Texas, which I did not want to do. Um, but I was going back to Texas because there's a lot of opportunity down there. Um, and thankfully, I was able to get this opportunity. Um, it's truly a dream job, and I hope to impress you very much. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer any.
Great.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Hema?
Okay. Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Mr. Tackin?
Yes.
Mr. Webster?
Yes.
Mr. Christel?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Yes.
And so now that Matt is officially hired, um, I, I just, I, something that I think that traditionally we haven't done as good a job, um, on as we want to is to tell our story, to, to really give a, a full picture of the things, the great things that go on in our schools. Um, we've, we've kind of had a gap between us and you being a lot of ways and, and getting that story out, and, uh, we're very, very confident in Matt with his experience with marketing and communication and, uh, and, um, marketing campaigns, that he's going to, he's going to really help us do that. And that's going to be really important for us as a community, uh, to have a common message throughout.
Thanks.
Moving to professional visits, um, we have some professional visits paid out of general fund.
Make a motion on these. Second.
Any, uh, discussion here?
I have one question. What, what is research with primary sources?
Yeah, so that is, um, social studies, um, and you can, you can support me by having gaps, but, um, that is, you know, increasingly where our curriculum and skills included in curriculum require students to not just deal with secondary sources in textbooks, but to actually go directly to source documents and, uh, and gain meaning from those and across those. Uh, so that was training for those teachers in working with primary sources in order to support those schools and their kids.
Mrs. Hema?
Okay, Mr. Tackin?
Yes.
Mr. Webster?
Yes.
Mr. Christel?
Yes.
Ms. Remington?
Yes.
Ms. Powers-Dolme?
Yes.
Item 13.1 is guidelines for public participation. And, um, as indicated earlier, the Board of Education provides two opportunities for public participation at each regular meeting. This is the second opportunity, and, uh, participants will, will be allotted five minutes to address the Board of Education, and I would like to read the statement. "The Board of Education recognizes the value of school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. As outlined in Board of Education Bylaw 0169.1, the Board shall provide a period for public participation in all regular meetings, and such participation shall be permitted only at, as indicated on the order of business for that meeting. This typically occurs at two points in the agenda. The first opportunity occurs during hearing of the public on agenda items. This portion is designed for comment on specific agenda items under consideration by the Board of Education. The second opportunity occurs during hearing of the public on non-agenda items. This portion is designed, is designated for comment on school matters of community interest." Guidelines for public participation include the following. Attendees, attendees must register their attention to participate in the public portion of the meeting upon their arrival of the meeting. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to five minutes' duration unless extended by the presiding officer. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. The complete set of rules for public participation is contained in Bylaw 0169.1 and is available at all meetings of the Board of Education. They may also be found online at www.pcls.net." And we have two individuals that signed in. We have Jen Hope.
And Alison Hope.
Want us to go down there?
Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Alison Hope. Um, I believe on March 27th, my son was suspended from school for, um, smoking a vape pen, which he was not, um, we feel suspended him, and it was listed on record that, um, he had two witness statements saying that my son did it and nothing else. Well, we've just come across another witness statement, and I have it in writing stating that Matthew had nothing to do with this. He was put in school suspension on Wednesday. He was, his two-day-out suspension started today and tomorrow. We tried to appeal it, and the Board, uh, Superintendent upheld the suspension, and we just feel he's wrong, he's convicted of something he didn't do. And, um... We got a text from the baseball coach, um, Matthew's supposed to contact the athletic director, which we feel he's going to be thrown off the baseball team, which is his life. Richmond Band is his life. He can't go to Disney now, and we're just, it's one of the boards to know our concerns.
And the school knew some facts, that they told us that they had the two witnesses. And the school knew some facts, but they told us that they had the two witnesses.